Should go deep in it.
This was another book or something.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
This is Kate.
All right, okay. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Commission Study Session meeting tonight. I would ask if you could please turn off or silence your cell phones and remind everybody that our meetings can be viewed every day at two o'clock, I'm sorry, channel two and six P M. and midnight on channel two and also on YouTube. And with that, we will go ahead and begin our next first item, the Guidance Center Annual Update.
You wanna have a seat here so you don't have to stand?
Sure.
Feel a little more comfortable.
I didn't bring a pen. You have a pen, I can borrow.
Yeah. Good evening.
Thanks for having me. Will Ward, to me, and from the City of Guidance Center. So, um, it's great to come talk to you now, especially here in Leavenworth. Well, twenty twenty-three was a big year and twenty twenty-four has been a big year at the Guidance Center as well. Starting July first of last year, we started on a transformation process and I think the City of Leavenworth has benefited this year, or at least is starting to see some benefits on how we're transforming. So everything I'm about to report is all within the last year. It's almost exactly one year old. So in that year, uh, we have created a veterans care team. We have placed a school-based clinician up on post in Fort Leavenworth. We have cleared our mobile crisis team to be able to respond on post as well as to the City of Leavenworth. We have created a brand-new support for any patient that comes to the Guidance Center, and that is called Individual Placement and Support. That's for employment. That is to help them with everything from what should I apply for, to the application process, to the employment, to up to a year and beyond post-employment, to help them remain employed. So if they have mental health symptoms and have exacerbation while they're on the job, we try to support them through that to see if the employer and the employee can work it out and the employment can be maintained. And that's where all comes from, at the Guidance Center. And again, brand-new. Uh, supported housing is something that's brand-new. We've been working a lot with Leavenworth and Table Housing, other, uh, community partners. Uh, and we know that that's arising, the unhoused population is a rising, um, issue that we've been seeing kind of, at least we've been seeing it here in Leavenworth. Uh, we have three school-based clinicians that are located in the Leavenworth School District, two in the high school and one in the middle school. So they are seeing patients in the school, uh, with the input of the teachers and the parents, uh, and it really helps them treat the children, uh, in the best way according to what the children are feeling with. We have, uh, there's sort of a community treatment team that's been created that's a year-old now. That's eight specialists, uh, that are going around and intensively helping out, seeing three, four, five times a week or more, some of our, uh, most symptomatic individuals. Uh, in fact, and that team is built up to fifty. And so that team has reached its goal. And so what that means now for these sort of community treatment teams is that they have no openings, but since they've been up and running for a year, they're starting to have some graduates. So now every month they'll graduate a few patients off and they'll take a few patients on. So, um, and these are the individuals that I think have been the most disruptive for Leavenworth, you know, on the streets, uh, disrupting businesses, uh, appearing threatening times, and those are the ones we're working with.
Sure.
Yeah.
Uh, we have created a mobile crisis response, uh, team. So that is, uh, two Guidance Center staff that go out to crises in the community. Uh, to give you an example of how that program has developed, from September to January, from September of last year to January, they had four dispatches. Now they're averaging about four a week. So that's, for the most part, that's, that's dispatches that the police department does not need to respond to, although every once in a while they need to respond as well. Uh, but it's at least taking, it's taking a little bit of the burden off of other, of law enforcement. We have a jail liaison that's been established with Sheriff Denny Key and has been great. So as individuals, uh, find themselves from the community to jail, we can keep treatment going. We have a therapist that's also living in jail as well. We have a very successful, I can't brag about her enough, Andrea Kessler, co-responder working with Chief kitchens. Um, I was, uh, in the Justice Center the other day, uh, and just happened to see Judge Lowery for the First Judicial District, and she said, you know what, when cases are coming to us now, we have Guidance Center staff telling us all the mental health updates. They, it helps them make so much, uh, better decisions on how to support, uh, individuals as they interact with law enforcement.
That's cool.
Medication-assisted treatment for individuals, uh, with opioid use disorder, that's still going on with the Guidance Center. Um, and we are active in that. Uh, we're fifty-plus patients and growing. Um, and what else can I say? We also are, um, executing the RiteLEP contract. And to date, I think that's still been a pretty popular contract, and it's still being relatively highly, there is some talks about expanding the lensing, but, um, that's, all those talks, one hundred percent of those talks are happening, happening with Leavenworth present because we don't want any impact negatively on Leavenworth.
Appreciate that.
Absolutely.
So, uh, and then the last thing I should say is that I'm interim CEO. However, we have selected our next CEO and, uh, Stevie Durkin, he's with us here today. He's in the last row.
Hello.
Stevie's not a stranger to the Guidance Center. He worked at the Guidance Center before, was promoted multiple times, and then was the Atchison, uh, clinic administrator before he had the opportunity to go and be an executive director, uh, of his own at a, uh, federally qualified health center up in Atchison for the last six and a half years. So we're in return, and he returns on August ninth.
Great.
Cool deal.
Great. Welcome back.
So we're excited about that. And that's what I have for your mission.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, any questions, comments from anybody?
You've got a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah, you do, realize.
Well, that's just the year, and we plan to hit it another notch in this, in this next year, in positions, uh, new programs.
How are you doing with grants and funding now? With all these programs?
We are successfully, we will always be looking for new grants and new funding. However, we are successfully transitioning off of a lot more grant funding.
Okay.
Uh, we're still.
Doing well.
Doing very well.
That's good to hear. That's good to hear.
Amazing plus.
That's always been an issue.
But as always, being a, uh, not-for-profit, you know?
Sure.
It's being reinvested in our services and in what we do.
Sure. Absolutely.
Cool deal.
So would you say the Guidance Center have any particular needs at this moment?
Particular needs? Uh, I think the Guidance Center is felt very warmly supported by the City of Leavenworth.
That's good.
Um, I feel like if I had an issue, I could come to any of you at any time.
Sure.
And I feel like you guys could, uh, listen and take it very seriously and, and work with us on whatever we're dealing with.
That's good to hear. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah. We appreciate that.
So not back now, but I might.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Appreciate having the co-responder.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's a really, uh, good thing for us, for our city citizens as well.
Yes, I agree.
You spoke of, uh, of folks that are opioid-dependent and, and having problems trying to get off of opioids and such. I'd just be interested in knowing how many of those are, uh, recent military, you know, retired or just recently got out of the military? And do, are you able to get support from the Veterans Administration or, or possibly the pharmacy on post?
Um, pharmacy on post does support us if we, if we send them prescriptions. Uh, unfortunately, I can't give you an exact answer of how many of our medications, medications are veterans.
But some are.
But they would be, yes, but some are, and they would be very welcome at the Guidance Center. You know, it's one of our, uh, populations of emphasis, uh, to support those veterans.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for the question. Appreciate it. And from there, we'll go ahead and move into the Leavenworth Main Street Program Annual Update. Hello.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving us another opportunity to come and talk to you. We're really excited to share some of our successes and also some of our plans for events for the remainder of the year. Um, so I've provided, uh, once again, the packet. Most of you have seen this information in our first, um, hearing or meeting. So there's information about our new proposed budget, information about where those funds would be applied, and also, um, on the back side, you're gonna see our current promotion, which is a shopping promotion for the month of July, well, Christmas in July, of course. But this is really something that, um, our fellow businesses can engage their customers when they make a purchase and encourage them to take this onto another, uh, business downtown, um, to actually make another purchase. So that the goal is to get people to shop and stay downtown for more extended periods of time and also provide them an access point that's affordable for them. So, um, kind of also touching base a little bit on the presentation, I have mentioned very briefly initiative that we started here in July called the Listen and Learn Campaign. So this is really your beginning point, especially for Main Street, as we make an effort to re-establish connection and trust with our business members downtown as a five-on-one-three organization. Um, in many years prior, um, we focused a lot on, um, events and promotions as our primary vehicle for our, uh, our nonprofit, and we're moving, uh, alongside that with more historic preservation, um, small business funding, grants, entrepreneurial education workshops, kind of the hub for Leavenworth and McCounty, um, in collaboration with the Chamber, um, L C D C in Row Leavenworth, um, and also, uh, economic development. Uh, a lot that we're hearing from the community is they're looking for diversity in their ability to shop downtown, that they do have a desire to shop, uh, to support local, but there's not enough of a, a range of experiences for them to come shop and stay downtown. We're working on that. So the Listen and Learn Campaign is really designed to give people a variety of opportunities to have their voice heard, and we really want to step out of the echo chamber that we've all been in and, uh, start reaching a lot of the, um, outline, um, segments of community that we want to bring, uh, and give them a place downtown. So there's an online survey component, and, uh, that launched in the first part of July, and we're really excited to say that we have a seventy, eighty percent completion rate, and we have over seventy people that have already taken, uh, the survey. So as we build, uh, awareness around what we're doing and we partner with other organizations in town to kind of validate what we're doing and get it out to a wider audience, I encourage everyone here to take the survey, um, and also distribute it in the way that you possibly can. We also have a interactive component to that, um, which we launched at the July thirteenth, um, concert that we just had, which was a great hit. Hopefully, a lot of you were able to attend. Um, but there is a, um, there's an interactive banner that says, what are the possibilities? What's important to you? So we give people kind of a prompt to get them started to think, and then they're able to write down a word or a sentence or whatever they want onto the sticky note posted on banner. And the more notes that are on there, the more people feel comfortable engaging with it. And then we aggregate that information at the end of the night. Um, so recently, we just, I just did that. We had over thirty responses, and the feedback was very positive, that people were excited about downtown, that they wanted to maintain the historic look and feel. They want more businesses, um, and they are interested in maintaining the infrastructure of it. So better crosswalks, better, um, access, um, for pedestrians at stoplights, um, just not necessarily the beautification, but maintaining the planters. And I think overall, at the, at the base of that is they're saying, we want to have that home, um, experience that they feel safe and comfortable in, in which to interact. So we will continue to do that through October. We'll put all of that information together. We'll have a community vision session that allows people to come and actually have a voice, and they'll hear about kind of what we've learned and gained over the last few months. And then that will be the foundation of Main Street's thirtieth anniversary strategic plan, which we will use to inform our role priorities and projects the next five years following that. Um, so we have a lot in the works. We're rebuilding our volunteer base. We're rebuilding our communities. We are putting together an executive committee, uh, along with the board, to help with, um, the thirtieth anniversary strategic plan. Um, there's just a lot of work that's, uh, taking place, but it's been very supported by our businesses and the people in the community who want to see that. In the other vein, um, kind of on the fun side of things, is that we're doing a Christmas in July promotion, which you saw. Um, the next, a lot of that applied. We're gonna do something completely new. So it's our goal to start creating, um, digital content, kind of a database of, of information we can pull from. This is called Snap and Shop, and it's an art walk. So at each business that participates, there'll be a prompt about, again, dovetailing in with the Listen and Learn Campaign. Let's say nature's touch. You're gonna take your phone, you're gonna go in, you're gonna be out there taking pictures of what you see as a citizen in Leavenworth that's beautiful for you. That's something that we learned at the national conference, is a really great way for people to communicate in a different way, um, for us to see what's really like an asset. So this is really kind of an asset mapping tool, um, exercise. So across all the different prompts, we're gonna have, um, a compilation of images that come directly from our citizens. They're informing us what they see, what's important to them, and what they value. Um, so that will be something that hasn't happened before, and we'll also be leveraging the, um, our mural pass, uh, passageways and mural art downtown as well. Um, we don't have graphics or anything for it yet, but we're hard at work on that. Um, so the previous concert that we just had was a phenomenal success. The M Eighties came out. Now, while they weren't a local band, the organizer is from Leavenworth, so the, um, the musicians have a tie to Leavenworth, which is really important for us to get that word out. Um, we had over four hundred people attend, which is absolutely phenomenal. It was packed. People stayed the entire time. We had, uh, a few of the cruisers down there. We had, um, Mario's and Luigi's were serving pizza. We had Scotty C's there for food. We had the concession, um, concession staff by our board, and we were packed the entire night. We were busy the entire night. And again, every event that I've had, um, my time at Main Street, I've had people come up to me and say, I haven't been down here in ten years. Thank you for doing this. So that is, uh, in and of itself means that people are, on some level, recognizing that we're making a change, and it's in a positive way. So coming up in September, that'll be our next, uh, next, um, concert event. These events in September and October are gonna be longer. They're gonna be half-day events, so they start at three P M. and they go all the way to ten P M. So we will have, um, musicians, numerous acts. We're gonna utilize the side stage and the main stage. Um, we're hoping to have similar turnouts with people. We'll have food trucks. We'll, uh, September, we're doing a new night market. So it'll be very similar to the city market, but it'll be taking place sort of three o'clock until ten o'clock. Um, it's a family-friendly event. We're really encouraging families to come out and enjoy kind of the remainder of, of summer. And then in October, we're really excited to announce our first annual, um, First City Rock and Rev Jeep Jam, which is a show festival that we really hope will bring, uh, Jeep enthusiasts, uh, not just from Leavenworth, not just from Fort Leavenworth, but from the Four State area to come into, um, Leavenworth, spend the night, stay here, shop and eat. And that'll be something that takes place in the first part of October. There'll be a concert, and there'll be the Jeep show, the Jeep Jam, and we are, and works with the city right now about what, uh, kind of layout and plan is for that. Uh, we have additional new events that'll be taking place in November and December to really activate shoppers downtown, but we're also gonna be partnering with, um, the community theater, uh, and the high school, um, doing some sort of interactive Christmas experience, um, downtown. So in addition, just starting to look at historic preservation, expanding our, uh, I W W No Interest Loan Program, and really starting to communicate grant opportunities for our merchants. Um, we will continue to support, uh, the city as, um, our promotions and events are meeting party.
I just have a couple of questions. Your business investor investments, we're the only one. Why are there not other business investors?
Currently, at this point, I do not believe that corporate sponsorship has actively been sought, but that is something, especially with these new events that we're doing.
I think that would help us in our decisions, if, like a match. Match would be good, you know, to be able to, for us to.
Um, in addition.
Cause we've got the C V B grant, and then we've got the city investment, but we're the only ones.
Well, so, um, we have your support from the city, and then you have our memberships that come in with our dues for our members. In addition to what we learned with the Listen and Learn Campaign, that opens me up to an opportunity to have a recruitment campaign and an upgrade campaign. That provides me with information, awareness, and trust for individuals to increase their membership levels.
Okay.
So along with the memberships, we have, um, a lot of the banks that invest more than just the regular, um, annual, um, fee. So we have, um, Country Club, we have Frontier, um, Community that go above and beyond on, on investing. So they're, they're still, they're not on, they're under the membership part is what, even their extra part that they give.
Well, they really should be separated out, I think. I think, I mean, your membership's one thing, but then if they're giving you extra money, that should be under here so we can see that.
No, no, totally understand.
I was like to create, so membership dues should be separate from sponsorship.
For sure. Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
And, yeah, so as I kind of get my hands into all of our financials and our kind of forms and working with Ashley at De Morantville, we'll be able to start making this a little more clear.
Okay.
And we're coming up with a new corporate package that we talked about in our, in our presentation, that we can take the pack, the package to corporate sponsors and show them what they're gonna be getting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and when they partner with a business, they're just going, hey, you're, you're partnering, you know, non-profit, it's gonna be helping build downtown, maybe it's something that's viable as well.
Yes, definitely.
So how's your fundraising? So like the Jeep, is that gonna be a fundraiser as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause you know, the city's looking at cuts, and so we want to make sure, it scares me that we're only your biggest funder. Um, so I want to make sure that you guys are, we can help you also fundraise and bring in some, I mean, individually, bring in, promoting you to bring in some other funds.
Fortunately, I've, I've been developing relationships, um, across other organizations here in town, and we've had a lot of conversation about how do we cross-promote, how do we partner better, and how we really raise the chamber.
Be aware.
Right. Um, Jen and I have had a lot of conversations about how do we do this together, and then how do we seek sponsorship together? Um, so I feel like there are some of the foundational things that may not have been in place before, but are highly visible now, and we're working on that. So the Jeep Jam really is a signature event. So that is going to be something where you have to pay to participate. Each different level you want to participate in terms of, you know, there are different types of awards and categories. There's an additional fee for all of that, and this really opens up opportunities for presenting sponsorships and additional event sponsors.
Awesome.
So we're really, we're looking for that to raise money, and then with coming into twenty twenty-five, bringing back the Spring Tea and some other larger events, um, that will really elevate our thirtieth anniversary, um, and those dovetail into the recruitment and upgrade strategies.
Awesome. Thank you.
I think, uh, growing signature events, it's, you know, you start small, but as you grow and grow and grow, I mean, the opportunities are really great for bringing in thirty to fifty thousand dollars a year from, from this.
And I want to compliment you on Saturday. It was great. The band was great. I know it's hot, but, um, people still showed up. Um, I went around and introduced myself to the vendors and thanked them for coming, and I think I shared it with you, Scott, but the Scotty C said it was the best night he's had in like three or four months, like, and so that is also generating sales tax money back to our community. So, um, it was a great night, and congratulations on a successful event.
Well, indeed, it was nice to see the many, I guess, the four years I've been here, I've never seen people show up at six fifteen for a concert and wait forty-five minutes just to get seats. Like, it was nice to see the community come together, cause, you know, we had nothing but positive feedback. I talked to, um, the bands, um, for today. He said he's got nothing but positive feedback from, uh, people he's talked to about the, um, about the event, how, uh, they enjoyed it. There was, the one big thing that everyone loved was the pavilion, where the view covered and stuff, it just kind of helps keep things, you know, cool and nice.
Well, book them again. They were a big draw.
They were a big draw. We'll keep, definitely keep those things in mind, because we had a lot of feedback from certain individuals, a segment of town that says, only bring local, we don't want anybody from outside. But then we also have an equal number of people that are saying, we're looking for heightened experience. We really want to have a good time, and, and that has a different definition to them. So we're walking a considerate line with that. But, um, you know, I heard from a couple of parents today that this is the first time that they were ever able to get their teenagers to come down and attend an event, and I saw at least twenty or twenty-five of them down there. Um, so anywhere from, you know, babies to eighty-year-olds.
Very everybody.
They were all there. They stayed the whole night, and they had a great time.
Yep.
Can I ask what your plan is for your outside marketing for twenty twenty-five?
Uh, that's definitely something that we need to, uh, leverage through grants and also our line item for billboards, other types of partnerships. It really is dependent on what are, what do we identify as our goals and our priorities that we want to elevate and how we want to do that. Um, but I really am looking to find a way to have better partnerships, um, across the different organizations so we can do cost share.
Okay, and, and I appreciate that. I didn't know what, what was driving that line specifically. Sounds like you guys don't have a plan yet on what you want to do.
Well, we definitely are gonna be focused on the Jeep Jam as a, as a tourism-driven, local, Main Street event. That is kind of our next, next big one that we will be putting out there.
We're gonna do a lot. We're gonna be doing, uh, a figure push on social media advertising, so that way we can hit niche markets and groups and ages, and also on the more advertising on the Ford, you know, that's more expensive and stuff. We're gonna try to leverage different ways to drop the cost of that, but hit that market as well. So, uh, at least, and that's something that we have missed out on probably for the past year, was we did, excuse me, we did not hit as much advertising as we had in the past
Okay.
On the Ford and stuff, so that's what we're swinging back to that.
Okay. Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
In collaboration with the spouses, et cetera, so to try and, um, gain some footing there, but also it's important for us to start bringing in some other individuals from Bonner, Beazer, Hecker.
Well, and I, yeah, there's one of my questions, cause I was like, wow, it's probably pie in the sky. Do you, have you thought of any ways else, you know, to measure some of those, you know? I know it's hard.
I can get some digital content numbers, right? Um, what we will see some traction on is the passports that we have created. That's a printed piece, um, and we'll be able to distribute those out into these other areas. And we'll, um, let's say we're taking things down to Long Springs to put in, um, the cafes and the hotels and that kind of thing.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
We can indicate that it's coming from Long Springs.
That's cool.
And we see that stuff come back into our community, that'll be a really big positive. And also, I should mention that we're partnering Camp Leavenworth. Um, again, as the greeters, we'll also have the Listen and Learn, um, booth there with volunteers, and, uh, we are working with Penny and the committee on how do we really actually activate, um, the audience to engage and, and go downtown, right? So we're looking at, um, you know, this passport that you've created, open it back up to additional, um, connections to see if they would like to participate.
You have like a Camp Leavenworth version, just for that weekend?
So we'll have a Camp Leavenworth version, and then we'll also create a digital version that lives on our website. Cause we're trying to drive people back to the website, so they'll go look at the events, and they'll go look at our membership, perhaps join, take the survey. So we are thinking more holistically.
Sure.
About how we funnel people into, uh, working with our nonprofit.
Don't, don't forget about Atchison, cause Atchison, a lot of Atchison people. Don't, don't forget about Atchison. Because Atchison, a lot of Atchison people end up going to St. Joe rather than coming here. I don't think we market to them very well.
That's true. And I actually am friends with the Main Street director out there and we had a conversation at the recent company meeting at Algena as well, so.
Good.
And we've had several opportunities come up to partner very closely with St. Mary's. So we're very excited to create a pipeline relationship with them. Because I need summer interns, I need fall interns. There's no reason why we're not building those relationships in the community.
Sure, sure.
Well, you know, these, you mentioning, you know, tracking people from outside, Atchison, Bay, Bezer, Bonner, maybe we can do a, an event of out-of-towners. Have them break, show your ID from, they're not local and receive an extra fifteen percent off or something. I mean, that's, you know.
No, see, I like ideas like that. Yeah, yeah.
Because they, and that's one reason where the passport, we were targeting the ledgers because they have all those new department contractors and stuff. And they normally have an information tower or something in their office and we're going to stack that up with our passports and stuff.
Cool, cool. No, that's cool. I mean, you mix that in with geofencing and everything, what you guys can do could be really cool. So, yeah.
So I got one question. Have you received any feedback from any youth or have you had any discussion regarding creating events that involve the youth?
Very interesting that you asked that today because I have an individual come in who is a digital content producer here in town, has moved here. And they have a goal of helping out with something that's specifically for the youth audience. We want to work, I mean, we're going to have our booths, we're going to have individuals up there at St. Mary's for kind of their welcome weekend. Because they've asked us how can we partner together so we can provide information to our college-age students about staying here, shopping here, coming downtown. The feedback I've gotten from that age group is, where do we go? We don't have, there's nothing for us, there's not a reason for us to go downtown when there's a Starbucks nearby, right? So they are, they're looking for an experience. They're here. We just have to find a way to get it to them. Now, the younger audience, I've had parents tell me that it would be really nice to have something. I know we have a splash pad. I know we have beautiful parks. I support them. I use them with my own family. But unless there's something downtown for them to be able to kind of anchor their experience with, they're losing their momentum. So like I used to be involved with SLAM. So we would go work out at the Riverfront Community Center and then we would go to Merry Weathers and we'd have our children and we'd be able to sit and talk and we'd stay there for hours. And then we'd go to the Versetti Cheese Market or whatever. And now that we don't have that, we're going back up on post. So I would love to have a conversation with everybody here and with Main Street about what does placemaking look like in a way, in an affordable way that we can create a moment downtown for parents and young children to play, engage, and stay.
Well, and even with teenagers, because I know you're, you're in with a lot of the teenagers in groups, what hits them nowadays besides video games? Because I mean, even the arcade is struggling with trying to get, you know, hours to get people in and stuff. So what is, you know, if you're a father of two teenagers, it is, you know, one does this, one does this. Then they have a common sports. But what, you know, what are they into now besides video games?
Or video games.
Yeah.
Basketball.
Yeah, sports, yeah, basketball, football, yeah, just outside activities.
And, and maybe not long-term.
Yeah.
But like events like the Snap and Stroll, it has a digital component to it. If we focus on outreach to teenagers through the schools, that is a really fun activity that they can come out and take part in. Just like with the first city gnome hunt, we actually had a group of individuals that were autistic that specifically came down for the gnome hunt because it was something of passion to them. They would have not come for any other reason, but they had a great, great time. So it's just being mindful about our programming to make sure that we're reaching a diversity in the audience.
I'll meet you. I got an idea.
Okay. I, I really do.
I always do. When it comes to the kids, you got to.
And then also, again, we have a professional scorecard that came from our home office, our national office, that really helps us start to put that health of our organization and to build a rubric for what our board should be focused on. And we have this phenomenal solutions catalog that's across eight of really important different sections from real estate to economic diversity to placemaking to ADA with workshops, toolkits, all of this recent research-based tools that we will be able to use when someone comes through my door or reaches out to me and says, I'm an entrepreneur or I'm interested in buying a historic building or what does historic preservation actually mean to Main Street and is it worth my time purchasing this building? We'll be able to be a better resource for everyone now that we have these tools.
Cool.
Question. How long have you been the executive director now?
Probably like four months.
Wow.
Seems like more. But next time you come to us, can we get this packet before the, you actually show up?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we'd help the city.
Yeah, give us a chance to review it all.
Who should I send it to? Sarah?
Sarah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks very much. All right, thank you guys.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, next item up here, we've got the Level with Public Library Needs Assessment Discussion.
Could you just turn that opera on?
Good evening, everybody. I think you've probably received a packet from Sarah. She rescued me. I accidentally sent her a document. It was about forty pages long and I only had one page that I needed extracted from that. So thank you for making this less of a pile. I've been in the business a long time and I got board members who say I tend to over-inform, but I don't want anyone to think that I'm leaving anything out or that we haven't thought about a lot of this, so that we don't have information available on the subject or the, the topic at hand. I think the cover letter is, is pretty self-explanatory. We did our, two years ago, we did our planning process and based on the, the comments, and I, I gave you every last one of them, all the comments that we received from the public about our facility. We asked, believe it or not, we asked twenty questions. And about, in, in all of these questions, across the, the survey itself, there were numerous, numerous, numerous comments about our facility. So I did want you to see what those trends were, the comments that everybody made. We had three hundred and sixty-four people reply. And this was, this is a subject that came up more often than any other, was the facility. So I wanted you all, all of you to have that. Part of the, after getting the results of this survey, the board decided that, well, the, the whole team that was working on the plan decided that we need to make this facility one of our main focus areas. So contemporary facilities is one of the four focus areas that were defined. And on the cover letter talks about the specific activities that were attached to making that happen. The first one was to meet with partners and stakeholders to, to communicate the need for an upgrade or a rebuild. So we commute, we have a, put together a facilities development team made up of board members, library administrators, members of the community, and discussed the history of the library, the growth of the library, the development of the library, the, the needs that were expressed by the community, and, and asked them to participate in putting together a draft request for qualifications. Because that's really the first step in determining the future of the facility would be to hire a design professionals to interview, to investigate, to look at the facility. As I mentioned in the, in the documents, this is, this is the one that was done back in nineteen eighty-four. So this process itself is really, it's very familiar and it's very fundamental, very basic anytime you want to do a kind of a project like this. So they put out, we developed a draft RFP. I involved the city engineer because I've done buildings in three different states that never Kansas. So I wanted someone to look at our document to make sure that we're covering the kind of grounds or the kind of things that the state might require, whether it would be good to see on a, on an RFP in Kansas and in Leavenworth. So this draft reflects input from the facilities development team, from the city engineer, and from a man who works for a local company, an architectural and design firm that specializes in libraries. So it is just a draft. It has certainly not been released yet. As you can see on the draft, it's been over a year since we got that document together. And I had not approached the, this group, the city commissioners, to ask for support for a number of reasons. I was, I've got advice in different people. It's a good time, it's a bad time, way to do this, way to do that. I just figured that it's sort of like deciding to have a baby. There's no perfect time. You just decide there are a lot of reasons to have a baby, there are a lot of reasons to not have a baby. You just start with your family. So I thought tonight I would introduce this idea to you formally, answer any questions that you have about the process. I included also, part of a needs assessment is to look at a facility and, and measure the, the, sort of the cons of the building, the, the issues. And this document is just a really cursory glance of some of the issues that we face in the facility, including structural issues. Our loading dock in the back is about, is about six feet off the ground. So when our daily deliveries arrive with material from all over the state of Kansas, somebody has to lift that up over their head, get it into that loading dock. When our staff passes our books that are going out, they lean over a six-foot drop-off with large bulky containers of material and hand them off. There are over fifteen tons a year worth of material that comes through that doorway. And that's just based on the weight of a paper bag. You got to, and hardbacks are twice as heavy. I know that there are, there are a lot of efficiencies. The, the lighting system and the electrical system in the library is, is old. It's consumes a lot of energy that I think we could definitely reduce with new technology. One of the fun things about our light bulbs, if you've been in the library, you know that there, some of them are twenty feet off the ground. So when a light bulb goes out, you can't just change that bulb. You have to get a lift, you have to get two guys to come in and it's heck of a process just to simply change light bulbs in the facility. And they put off, when you're in the building with those lights off, it's, it's kind of peaceful and quiet when you turn them on. So throughout the day, every time somebody, every, every hour we're open, there's that constant low-level buzz going on that creates a noise level that people have to speak over. I know if you look at the comments in the public, some people say, boy, it's a really nice quiet place. I don't know when they were there. The big open floor plan, we have, some of our people have hearing problems. We have to answer the phone. So we get more complaints from people like, you don't have any quiet place in this building. I can't sit anywhere and study. I can't sit anywhere and read or, or just relax because I hear you talking on the phone. I hear you working with your patrons. I hear kids over there in the children's apartments because it's one, largely one big connected chamber. So the sound really, really moves around. We have one small room in the corner of our, the adult department that we call the study room, that you could put two people in there maybe. We re, we opened our boardroom for the public a couple of years ago and that's, that's sort of helped. But we have a lot of people that want to come in and work in small groups. They, they want to collaborate with, they want to talk to clients. They want to work on things. And we don't have any space for that to happen. And, and the one role that the community pointed out is they, they want the library to be a community hub, a place where those kind of things can happen. I don't know if you've been to see the, the new library they built in Tonganoxi, but they have, I think, at least two to maybe three small meeting rooms and one large meeting room. So they accommodated that need and it's definitely a need that's been identified by the people that responded to our survey. When we, this is kind of interesting. There was a three, four-door file cabinet in a back office that no one could open, no one could find a key for it. So had a locksmith come in, got a key. I tried my lockpicking skills with the paper clip and it didn't work. I have found a treasure trove of information about the development of the library as I moved from the Carnegie to our current location. Two of our board members who have a great number of years of experience, as luck would have it, were not serving on the board at that time. So they didn't even remember some of the facts and some of the details and some of the information that was shared in the development of this current building. So I reviewed that document and some others and found a couple of interesting things. The building was designed with a twenty-year life plan, or lifespan in nineteen eighty-four. So we've already doubled, exceeded the projected use of the facility based on projected growth in the community, projected growth in collections, projected changes in the way people use the library. Also, they examined, I think, five, at least five other sites around, where would the best place to build a library be? When it's centrally located, when it's one within walking, walking distance. So they set up a good set of criteria for relocating because one of the big issues of the Carnegie, of course, is there was no parking. So it was not going to be really possible without acquiring a lot of real estate around it to stay in that location. So the, the Yon Building that ended up being the development was never in that original mix. They, they came up with a, I think they made a proposal to the man who owned the property that was, that was best suited and price went up a little bit between the original discussions and the proposal. So the Yon Room or the Yon Building was a very, very kind of last-minute addition. And, and this report, the architects state that the Yon Building, if, if you move in there, it's six thousand square feet less than the building you planned. All this work, all the facility, all the, all the surveying, all of the, the analysis of data, if you move into this building, you're losing six thousand square feet that you said you needed. And then there's also four thousand square feet up on the mezzanine where all the office spaces. So four thousand square feet of that is really not even available or accessible to the public until we open up our boardroom. So there are some handicapped, sort of, well, the day we moved in, basically, it was, it was smaller than, than it was originally intended to be. I don't know. I, I think it's probably a combination of cost, a decent location. But right, right from the get-go, the idea was a larger building and we ended up in a smaller one, a significantly smaller one. And again, the, the projected lifespan was twenty years and it's forty years later. So as much time and thought has gone into this and as much people, as many people have been involved and as much information as we have, I would really like to get the city's support to help take the first step towards examining the current library, examining if there were other options in the community, other locations, other places, and start moving towards a, a facilities development plan to help serve this community for the next generations. We did solicit support from the community to help offset some of this cost. The foundation received donations from over a hundred people and they committed all of those dollars to that, to the eventual cost or the needs assessment. We received some support from the Sisters Charity. We received support from Mr. Geiger, a couple of individual board members. So we have sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in the bank, basically waiting to, to help defray that cost. Back when the first study was done in the eighties, the city paid three thousand out of the four thousand. I know the four thousand dollars went a lot farther back in nineteen eighty-three. I don't know what an exact cost would be. I've heard so many different quotes. I can't tell you. In our recent experience with developing our website and our branding, we put out an RFP that said exactly what we wanted and we got responses that ranged from over a hundred thousand dollars to twenty thousand dollars. So I can't tell you how much it would cost. I think if we, if we received forty thousand from the city, along with the sixteen thousand seven fifty we've raised already and may, there may be more forthcoming, I think that would pay for the needs assessment by a team of professionals that know libraries and could help us, again, get, get to this stage again where we're, we're ready to propose maybe to the community and get their support for a new facility or a renovated facility.
So just a quick, quick question that I've got. So let's, let's say you, you had a needs assessment done and you're like, okay, it's determined. Yeah, that's the best path forward. And I will tell you, I'm, I'm all about not throwing good money after bad into maintenance costs, excuse me. But let's say it was determined, okay, that's what's going to need to be done. Is that something that, you know, the state gets involved with in your experience, Matt, you know, to assist with costs for a new facility?
I, there's no money available from the state of Kansas for a facility. The federal government used to, used to support brick and mortar. They haven't done that since the early nineties. I worked in a library that got the last half a million that was offered by the state. Every state in the union used to get a half a million bucks from federal government through the Department of Education for the Library Services or LLGS, no, Ella, Library Services Construction Act, LSCA. They haven't done that since the early nineties. All of the federal funds now are for networking and for other technologically based things. There is not, now again, the donation we received from Mr. Geiger expresses interest in us keeping him aware of what's going on. And from my experience in a, in a new library that I was involved in building, after it was done or during the life of the project, especially after the community saw it, people began writing checks because that project was roughly two hundred thousand dollars in the red when it was finished. And that amount within a year was, was covered because people loved the library. They, they loved to see the, what was They, they loved to see the, the, um, what was going on there, they loved to see the fat, this jewel that, that was built in Amish country, Ohio. So when people see the, the product, and a part of the problem faced with getting community support to help pay a needs assessment is, well, what do, you know, there's no guarantee the city's going to invest in this, so why do we want to spend all of our money on a project for, that the city might not be reinvested in at all? So it was kind of a tough selling for our foundation because they were concerned that we could, you know, we got fifty, fifty-some thousand dollars, we spent it all and it just went nowhere. Again, like the, you like to see people have skin in the game and, and we have it. But the, I think the, the primary supportive would be good to see that come, of course, from the city. It's a city institution, it's a city facility, and, uh, donors like to know that they're, that the, the people who really have a vested interest in it are, are in the game.
So then that was, that was my other question was, uh, so if we weren't looking at, sorry, I've talked a lot today. So either way, we wouldn't be looking to get any money from the state even for doing a modernization project or anything like that, is that right? You'd be looking for the city to?
I don't believe any money exists from the state of Kansas, that there, there's no state program that funds anything like that. Um, I checked with HUD, uh, I, I thought that maybe there was some opportunity there, but, uh, the focus that the city has on, on HUD development and those HUD dollars doesn't include support for a project like this, so.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just want to make sure we're looking at either way, it'd be, it'd be more money coming from the city, bottom line, it sounds like.
Yes. And if, eventually, I, I would assume that, uh, as in nineteen oh-two when the, when the first library happened, the community went out and voted on whether they wanted to support it or not. Uh, so the end result, a, an actual plan for a library and the cost for a library would be, I think, up to the voters to probably say yea or nay. So it wouldn't be anything that.
It would be, it would be up to the voters.
Yes.
And the first library came from the Carnegie.
Yeah.
So.
And the city, Andrew Carnegie never built a library in a community that didn't agree to, to pay to operate it. Um, so that's, that's where the, this, so every development, every stage in this library in this community has been private money from somebody at Carnegie, public money from taxpayers. Um, and this is another example of, of how we're trying to, to get that energy back and, and build those partnerships and get to the next stage. The, the Carnegie served the, the community for about eighty years. Uh, this, this building's been open since about eighty-seven. So based on, again, on, on what we heard from the community and what I've seen in the, in the building itself, the way I, I know that operate, I know that the, uh, there were different improvements that could be made, be actually more efficient operation. I would love to see, love to see this get off the ground with your support.
Well, it's not, it's not in the budget for this year.
Yeah.
And that's, we've already done our budgets.
Right.
Not in budget for this year.
Okay.
But I, I think it takes a lot of further discussion.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, just thank you for presenting to us, I believe you mentioned something about it last year. Uh, yes, not in the budget, it's some tough times, but it's definitely given us an opportunity to think about it in the future, just be more prepared and, yeah.
Well, as I said, it was, should I, should I talk to them? And I got, like I said, I got a lot of, well, don't do, don't do it now, wait till later. But I, basically, the, the clock is ticking, the building's not getting any younger, and I, I've heard, although I haven't confirmed this, that there's, you know, talk about putting a new roof on the building, which, again, I don't know if that's part of the CIP, that's just a rumor that I heard.
I don't think it's part of CIP.
No, it's not.
I'm not sure. Somebody told me that, you know, the, the, the idea of putting a new roof on the building, uh, we could use a new roof, it leaks like crazy sometimes. Uh, but I, I guess I would rather see, instead of spending a chunk of money on, on sort of a Band-Aid, on, on this part of it and then that part of it and then another part of it, a new facility or a real, real renovation of where, of where we are, I think would be a far more efficient use of, of public dollars.
So you have really no idea how much this would cost because you.
Not tell you it ain't until you do it.
Right. And when the RFP goes out, again, I, I've been, I've done this a lot. I would say, well, probably fifty to sixty thousand dollars would be adequate with a little bit of contingency in case something comes up. If, for example, somebody offers a really dynamite site, but some engineering has to be done, you need to go out and do soil sampling, you need to do some other, other things to determine the suitability of the site, have a contingency fund as part of that in order to address any of those things that, unexpected costs or opportunities that you might, uh, we might experience during the process.
My only thought, and I'm sorry if you're gonna, um, have any comments.
Give us your dream. Tell us your dream. Where would you put it? How many stories? How large?
I think he could do that. You can't do that. You can't do that here. I mean, he can't do that here.
Okay, don't give us your dream.
I, I don't, I, I don't want to go there.
I, I guess I would, I would hesitate with, until we get some community input.
There you go.
Because I don't want it to seem, well, it's, it's what the librarian wants. No, not at all. As a matter of fact, when I got this job, I said, I'd never, I'm not going to have to do another library building, I've done it everywhere. It's really a lot of hard work, a lot of heavy lifting, and sometimes it can be controversial and sometimes it can be, it's just hard. But here we are.
Yeah, I mean, it would take like a capital campaign because you're talking millions when you're building a new building.
Yeah, millions. And I will say.
I know that for a fact.
Matt, I, I do appreciate you saying something because you're right, it's like, well, when's a good time to ask, you know, that ask that you got on the table? Yeah, yeah, exactly. Um, I would say that definitely larger conversation for another time, like Nancy was saying, uh, I would absolutely would reach out, you know, we as a city, I think, would reach out to the county and say, hey, whoever's going to be impacted in Leavenworth County, talk about skin in the game, let's talk about it, right? You know, even if there was a proposal on the table for if we were to contribute some amount to a, a needs assessment, you know, or, or full, you know, study like you were talking about, so, um, you know, maybe it's something we can put on a future discussion, you know, meeting or something like that, but, um.
And my job is to, is to inform you.
Yeah.
I think that the relationship between the library and the city's longstanding, it's been very productive. It's, um, and this might seem like, boy, this, this building stinks and it's a terrible mess, it's not. It's, we're, we've got a facility, it's functioning, it's just to the point where.
I would wait till the new city manager comes in.
I totally agree with that.
[laughing].
We'll, we'll name it after.
We haven't put off much, but I would put this off until he comes in, he or she comes in.
Yeah, bottom line, it would be millions and, uh.
But I would, um, I would invite you.
They might have, they might have experience in this type of thing, so.
I would invite you all, um, to join me at the library and we could do a walk-around. You could ask questions about the facility, you could take a look at all, all the nooks and crannies, all the little corners, some of the, some of the things that you've only heard about might, um, might be better to see. Uh, it might stimulate more questions or ideas, uh, as we have these discussions moving forward, because that's.
Well, Mayor is on your board, so certainly do that.
But if, like I said, if you, if you would like to give me a call and have, and I would be glad to host the walkthrough, um, again, any questions that you have.
And I appreciate this. I mean, the surveys aren't wrong, I mean, this is honest feedback, I mean, it's good stuff here, and I really enjoyed reading the minutes from February twenty-eighth, nineteen eighty-four. And it was interesting to me that, um, some of the same issues they had then, we got now. So it was very interesting. So thank you for, for bringing this, um, piece of information.
Thank you for all your work, Matt.
You're welcome. And I, I would say kind of making all the copy of this, but if you're interested in reading. Uh, but you're right, some of the, it's, it's, public facilities are, there's, you always kind of run into the same problems after a while, and the, the Carnegie is a beautiful building, I've worked in Carnegie, renovated, did historical preservation on one in Wyoming, um, but there simply aren't plugs in the walls.
Yeah.
There's simply not enough parking.
Yeah.
All the kids had, all the kids were shoved downstairs where they could be controlled by, you know, a, a movie-style librarian with a bad temper. So there were a lot of different ways that, that libraries were designed in the nineteen hundreds, just aren't cutting it anymore, so.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
With that, that does conclude our meeting tonight. If you want to go around the table, starting with.
Any of you?
Okay, Ed?
No.
No.
Oh, uh, God bless, stay cool, and you don't have to get outside, don't get outside, but if you want to get outside, go to Walrus Pool, it's beautiful. It's a good place.
I know you're going to talk about the internationals.
We can go too.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we did that this morning.